Welcome to tonight's city council meeting. We always begin with a prayer and a pledge. For those that would like to join me in prayer, please bow your heads. Gracious Father, we ask you to be with us tonight as we go about deliberating the city's business. Be with us as we make those decisions. Lord, we also ask that you be with all our city workers, keeping them safe and keeping their in your will. Lord, we also honor two of your, two of your sons tonight. We honor the life and of Pastor Bradley and also a former council member, Tom Webb. Be with their families, Lord. Give them strength. We ask this in your name. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councilmember Milne.
Here.
Councilmember Tibbs.
Present.
Councilmember Bench is excused. Mayor Protem Clock.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Present.
Councilmember Bryant.
Present.
Councilmember Balls is excused. Councilmember Humphreys.
Here.
Mayor Browning.
Here.
We have seven members present and two excused.
from speaking, cheering, booing, or other rude, obnoxious behavior. Obviously, this is not the crowd that we expect that from, but I have to do that. Also, I will call somebody in the audience and see if they turn their phone off for me. If you haven't turned yours off, I suggest to turn it off or turn it down for me, please, as well as the council members. We'll see which one forgot. Isn't that awful? See if I just called one of my council members to see if their phone's off. That'd be good. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We're at announcements. I'd like everyone to know that City Hall will be closed this Friday, November 10th, for the Veterans' Holiday. And also, the City Waste Convenience Station is open the second Saturday of the month, and city residents can dispose of building items, materials, and recycling for glass, plastic, and paper. The next service day is this coming Saturday, November 11, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. Next on our agendas, we have a proclamation honoring the life and service of Thomas Webb.
And then, Clerk, I am going to change the order on these two. If you don't mind, please. Can we do that?
Do not mind. And we support the proclamation honoring the life and service of Pastor Dr. Rufus Bradley, Sr.
Okay, and I'm going to ask that Deacon James York come forward, please. Deacon York, it is great, a privilege to read this and also with a very sad heart. I'd like to present this proclamation. Proclamation in memory of Doctor, of Pastor Dr. Rufus Bradley, Sr. Whereas on behalf of the Saginaw City Council, we offer our warmest condolences and heartfelt sympathy to the family of Pastor Dr. Rufus Bradley, Sr., whose rich and abundant life came to a close on October 12, 2017. And whereas Rufus was born in Arkansas in 1952 and made Michigan his home while earning his bachelor's degree from the United Bible Institute of Flint, in 1985, Pastor Bradley began New Life Baptist Church in Saginaw, where he served as pastor for over 30 years. From the beginning, Pastor Bradley and his congregation touched thousands of lives through the ministry and the compassionate community outreach of New Life Baptist Church. And whereas in 2006, Pastor Bradley and New Life Baptist Church formed Mission in the City to help restore the community, one person, one block at a time. Missions in the City has made a tremendous impact in creating and maintaining programs that benefit the city of Saginaw and brighten the future for many young residents in our community. And whereas Pastor Bradley leaves to cherish his memory, his beloved spouse, Rolinda, his two children, June and Rufus Jr., five grandchildren, three brothers, and five sisters, as well as an entire church congregation and a grateful community of friends and colleagues. And whereas there are many ways to describe this beloved servant and selfless man of God, however, words cannot convey how Pastor Dr. Bradley, Rufus Bradley, Sr. enriched the lives of so many in the city. His death leaves our community with a deep feeling of sorrow for the loss of such an honored and respected citizen. Now therefore it be resolved that I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, hereby urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the life, outstanding achievements, and loving spirit of Pastor Dr. Rufus Bradley, Sr. in the city of Saginaw. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this sixth day of November in the year of our Lord, 2017. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Councilmembers Floyd Clock, Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphreys, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and our city manager, Timothy Morales. Mr. Speaker, would you come forward and receive this? Thank you.
This is what you want.
There you go. We'd love you to say a few words, please.
First and foremost, it's with a humble spirit that I received this proclamation on behalf of the late Pastor Dr. Rufus Bradley, Sr. family and my New Life family. Thank you to Mayor Dennis Browning, City Councilman, and Tim Morales, City Manager, for honoring and recognizing the life works of a such great community visionary leader and pastor. In Matthew's 15:16, it says, "Let your light shine before others, that they may see your good deeds, and glorify him in heaven." This scripture is an example of how he dedicated his life service to God and helping others. Thank you.
Okay, we have another proclamation this evening, and it's honoring the life and service of Thomas Webb.
Correct.
Okay, you want to stand up there too, please?
Yes.
And there's Chris Travers? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, if you could stand up there too, please. Mr. Mud, Dr. Mud, thank you very much. I have a proclamation here in memory of Thomas Webb. Where on behalf of the Saginaw City Council, we offer our warmest condolences and heartfelt sympathy to the family of Thomas Webb, whose heartfelt and devoted life came to an end close on October 15, 2017. And whereas Tom leaves behind a chair, to cherish his memory, an entire community of family, friends, and colleagues who respected him as a brother and as a honorable leader. And whereas Tom received his bachelor's degree from Bowling Green State University and a master's degree from Ohio State University, Tom was an Army veteran and a dedicated member of the police reserves. Tom later shaped the lives of hundreds of young adults as a science teacher and athletic trainer at Saginaw High School. And whereas Tom, a Saginaw resident for nearly 50 years, assumed many roles to make a positive impact in the Saginaw community, he was the chairman of the Michael Jeffers Memorial Foundation and Park Committee, chairman of the Saginaw High Neighborhood Association, founder of the Saginaw County Veterans Plaza Committee, and a proud member of the Saginaw City Council. Whereas Tom was known for his greatest achievements for the city of Saginaw, it is no surprise that Tom was recognized in 2013 as the Saginaw Valiant of the Year for his dedication and service to the Saginaw community, and was also selected as a grand marshal of the Saginaw Christmas Parade in 2016. And whereas Tom Webb dedicated his life to making the city of Saginaw a better place to live, work, learn, and play, from his beginning as an energetic schoolteacher to his later years as a strong city leader, Tom Webb's impact in our community will continue to enrich the lives of others for generations to come. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, hereby urge all citizens of Saginaw to recognize, honor, and celebrate the life, the outstanding achievements, and passionate spirit of Tom Webb in the city of Saginaw. In witness hereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Saginaw to be affixed this sixth day of November in the year of our Lord, 2017. Signed, Dennis D. Browning, Mayor. Councilmembers Floyd Clock as Mayor Protem, Michael D. Balls, Annie Bench, Clint Bryant, John Humphreys, John Milne, Brenda F. Moore, and Demond L. Tibbs, and our city manager, Timothy Morales. Mr. Mud, would you come forward to receive this, please? It was an honor, and it was a privilege to work with Tom Webb. In my case, it was mainly with historic preservation projects. You know, there are a lot of people who talk a good game. There are a lot of people that can sit in a room and envision and say, "We should do this, and maybe we will do this," but then they don't follow through. One thing about Tom Webb, when he saw the need, he did follow through. He had a very broad concern, not just with historic preservation, but also with neighborhoods and with the administration of the city. And he was a very determined person in almost everything that he did. Jeffers Park, I was on that committee. He led that committee for almost two years, and we had meeting after meeting. And one of the things that I thought was really powerful about him is that he was a listener. He never took being the head of any kind of project as being all about him. It was all about the other people and their input into the committee. He was very, very good at collaboration. He took a park, which was sadly neglected for so many years, and he used that power of that committee to make that a true gem in the city. Veterans Plaza, I was also on that committee, and I was amazed, and it was a large committee, I was amazed how that moved along. As we had to move the World War II monument from Jeffers Park, we moved that over to Hoyt Park, and then the forlorn monument to World War I that was hidden away on Ojibwe Island was brought together for one of the, I think, one of the best military memorial gardens in the whole state of Michigan. One of the things he did there, too, was that he allowed everybody to speak up and put their input in, and he had that wonderful ability to put that all together and direct it so that we could finally get the job done. Well, his last job was with the Fairgrounds Gate Memorial Park Project, a tough project which we're still working on. That was something that Tom and I worked on together. It took us almost a year to get the Fairgrounds Gate on the National Register of Historic Places. That gate is very symbolic of the success of this city. We were the largest county fair in the whole United States, other than Pomona, California. One thing he did was he, he did things that you didn't think he could pull off. He said, "Well, I'm going to call Dan Kilde, Congressman Dan Kilde, and I'm going to have him come in here with his staff and meet with the city." Well, sure enough, we did, with Manager Morales and other people in the city. He came here. Then later on, later on, when we were still having trouble with HUD, he said, "Well, what I'll do is I will call the staffs of Vanessa Guerra and Ken Horn, and I'll have them come to the city and they'll meet with us about this project." And I, I thought to myself, "Well, good luck on that one." Well, sure enough, I got a call from him, and he said, "Be over, be over at Old Town in the Red Eye at 10:00 for the meeting." So I got there, and I noted that Vanessa Guerra and her staff had already arrived. I was surprised at that. But then I saw Tom pull up in his car. It took him an agonizing amount of time to get out of that car and to walk into the Red Eye. And that's maybe the first time I realized that he was really in serious, serious health, because he never complained, never complained. Well, we started the meeting, and then who walks in but Ken Horn, State Senator Ken Horn? So we had a wonderful meeting, and he did, that's the kind of person he was, that ability to bring those people together. And last, we did a cleanup at the Fairgrounds Gate recently with Saginaw County Parks. And I knew that maybe Tom is, that's not the kind of work Tom could do, given his condition, so I called him up and told him about it. He apologized profusely and said he was so sorry he couldn't be there because he was feeling a little down. But I told him, I said, "We couldn't clean out the gutters up there. The ladder wasn't just quite tall enough to get in there and dig all that dirt and grass out of the gutters." And he said, "Tom, I'm going to get right on that. We need a bucket." Well, he died a few days later, and he never really did get to it, but if he had been in good health, he would have got to it. I had profound respect for the leadership skills of Tom Webb, and he will be sorely missed. Thank you.
I want to take this opportunity to thank the city council and its members. My name is Steve Mason, and I want to thank also the citizens of the city. I'm going to talk about Tom Webb and my own personal experiences. Tom was my mentor. I went to Saginaw High in the early '70s. I started in 1969. I met Tom. He was our athletic trainer. Tom told me one most profound things I've ever heard in my life. He says, "I want you to be successful. I'm going to take time. I'm going to mentor you, and I'm going to show you how to do that." And I have been successful in my life. I worked as a corporate executive, ran a $30 billion corporation, and I'm proud to say he made me proud. I've made him proud. Tom had two or three passions in his life. One, he loved to be an athletic trainer. The other, he loved the city of Saginaw. He worked diligently to work on projects, as Mr. Mud mentioned. He took a tremendous amount of pride in that. I talked to Tom Webb every Sunday since the age of 18. Tom also mentored many of my colleagues I grew up in high school with, and you can go anywhere in the city of Saginaw and ask people who Doc Webb is, and they'll tell you. He was a great, made a great impression on my life, been a part of my family life for about 45 years. He was the godfather to my daughter here. I was there when Tom passed. I got there about 45 minutes before he passed away. It broke my heart, and it's hard for me to sat here, and I'm, I'm going to miss him. And again, I want to thank all of you, giving this opportunity, his honor in his name. I appreciate it. Thank you so very much.
Mayor, we are now at personal appearances.
Okay, those that were here for the presentation for Mr. Webb, now would be a good time if you wanted to step out, because we're going to have personal appearances. You're welcome to stay for the whole council meeting if you'd like, though. We certainly would encourage that, but we certainly understand. All right, front row, you must be in the front row coming in now. There you go. You must be in the front row. Ladies, I have some seats up front. Gentlemen? I'm not sure why they're here. Chief, we certainly have given you a workout tonight, sir. You're doing all right. As we begin tonight's business, we welcome your thoughts and input. On personal appearance, if you come to the podium, please introduce yourself and state your home address. To be helpful, let us know if you will be speaking solely or on behalf of a group. All speakers will have a three-minute limit, which is timed by the clerk, so be sure to cover your main points. Hearing from the citizens we represent is very important to us. We ask that you speak slowly and clearly so we don't miss what you have to say. Finally, since you are speaking as a representative of all our citizens, we ask that you be courteous and respectful to the members of the public present, to the citizens watching SGTV, and to this council, so we can give serious consideration to your concerns. All follow-ups will be referred to city staff. Madam Clerk, our first personal appearance?
First personal appearance is William Burns.
I'm here advocating on behalf of Old Town Christian Outreach Center and the Soup Kitchen at 600 Greshit. Our programs over the years are ever-expanding and ever-getting larger, and the need just doesn't seem to go down. Especially in the last 10 years, we have added a number of buildings to our facility through the help of Saginaw County Foundations and others, to the point that on Saturday alone, we gave out over 100 million, excuse me, a million pounds of food. 50,000 hot meals, thousands and thousands of pieces of clothing, and our kids closet, which addresses kids zero to about 12. Because of the expansion that we've gone through in the last 10 years, we find it necessary to buy a building, which we did, at 523 Mackinac. Now, the only entrance to that Mackinac, the only entrance to that Mackinac address is on South Fayette, the 500 blocks that we have in question here. We're looking at a couple issues here. Number one, in that 500, or in the 523 Mackinac, we want to put furniture and also appliances that we freely give away, take it away from our clothing, which is occupying space right now. Give us more room in the clothing area, and give us a large area for furniture and appliances. By doing so, we again expand those areas. The other issue is that of safety. It's incumbent upon Old Town to provide a safe work environment for not only people who work there, but also the many volunteers that come. Recognizing that volunteers may be only on campus for one time or one day out of a year, we have to have a safe environment to be able to have them go back and forth across the 500-block Fayette to deliver what we have over there to offer, which will be furniture and appliances. We also have the baby pantry. The fact is that-
Unfortunately, your three minutes has expired. Do you have a quick sentence to finish up with? I, I'll please allow that.
Yes, I do. We're not talking about hot meals and food or anything like that, gentlemen, madam. We're talking about the need. There's a need to do this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nelson Band.
It is with great honor and pleasure that I come before this distinguished board tonight, and God bless this great city of Saginaw. It's 1315 South- It's 1315 South Center Road. Thanks. I've been at Old Town about eight years now, and what I'd like to do is just expound a little bit about, a little bit more about the problem that we're facing on Fayette Street. Grashit, which is the main artery, we call it Grashit Street, but it really isn't a street, it's a highway. It's M-46. And it has some inherent problems in it, because it weaves its way through Saginaw. And so drivers on Grashit, the majority of the drivers on Grashit aren't, don't have a destination in Saginaw, they usually have a destination someplace else. So you very, you have to pay attention to signage as you weave your way through Grashit. Now, where it affects us is where Grashit intersects Fayette Street, and it does it on an angle. So if you're traveling east on Grashit, and you want to make a left turn onto Fayette, you have to zoom in to that street, you almost have to dive into Fayette Street, because you, there's so much oncoming traffic. I've been at the church, like I said, about eight years, and since I've been at the church, I've seen two accidents there, one in which a car actually caught on fire. And the latest accident was about maybe a month and a half ago, where two elderly couples collided, just because of all that confusion going on with it. You have Grashit, you have Fayette Street, and you also have Lyon Street that's coming at another angle into that same area. So this really affects people crossing the street, and you say, you might ask, "Why are people crossing the street?" And that's a good question. Across the street, we have our baby pantry. And people who participate in the baby pantry are mothers that can't afford the baby that they have coming right now. And we offer a complete line of services to them. They get leonets, a car seat, clothes, food. It starts in our office, and then they have to cross this street, Fayette Street, to get to our baby pantry. And what happens is, their minds aren't on oncoming traffic, they're happy that they can bring a baby home, and they have everything they need to bring that baby home. And what compounds that problem is sometimes they have kids in tow. So they are pregnant, and they have other little kids with them that are, everybody's trying to cross this street with cars trying to dive in. And what happens is, if a car comes in, as soon as you're at Fayette Street, you have to brake. If there's any pedestrians, you have to brake right away. So you dive in, and then you have to brake. The next group that uses that street would be our teens. We have a teen ministry, they have a building that was completely renovated over there. It's a beautiful building. The teens are very proud of it. But I like to pose a question. Does anybody in council right now know of a teenager that doesn't have a phone? Another distraction in crossing that street. And also, we add to the mix, we add our furniture department, where people who are burned out, flooded out, whatever, can get free furniture.
All that for seconds, with safety crossing the street.
Thank you, Mr. Band. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Donald Deninger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for the opportunity to share. My wife and I pastor Old Town Christian Outreach Center. We have for 21 years, and we've seen the services expand. And again, my, my major concern is safety for the people, the ones that come for help, the ones that come for whatever reason. But I just want to, we've shared that, and I know I only have a minute, but as we go through, I sat through with the Planning Commission, went through all this, and they totally said, they were, they were totally for it. City manager is for it. The Director of Public Affairs, the City Traffic Department, the fire, the city engineers, the fire station, in fact, the battalion said, "That's a good idea because of the angle of that street to close it." The County Land Bank, Tom Miller, said, "That's, fits in with his vision of that whole area." The utility said it was no problem. The courthouse gave approval. The traffic study concluded that the traffic in that area was all to Old Town, most all of it. But here's what I want to share, really quickly. 50 years ago, I was a policeman in the city of Saginaw. It was in Saginaw's heyday, and you remember that, Mr. Mayor. And for 20 years. But Saginaw lost much of its work, and Saginaw totally fell down from 100,000 to 50,000 in a few, just a few years. I love Saginaw, I've been in Saginaw all my life. Graduated from Saginaw High School. Saginaw's my home. And when I look at this, and I saw what was happening, this police department went from 212, when I was on, to 50 now. And Saginaw needs help, but I see, it felt, but I see it coming back, all of a sudden. I see what's taking place on Water Street, and I see what's taking place with the condos that are being built on Hamilton Street. And I see something happening in Saginaw, and I want to be a part of it. And when we look at, you know, when we bought this building, and we bought this property, we own, on the street we want to close, we own all the buildings on both sides of that street, in fact, in three square blocks there. And when we bought it, there was a horse barn there. And next to the horse barn was a, it was a stable, and there was a home for people that brought their horses in. That was 150 years ago. Saginaw isn't there anymore. And what I want to say is Saginaw is never gonna come back the way it used to be. It just won't. It never has. It won't come back. But I see it coming back, totally different, and I want to be a part of that. And I see closing this street isn't gonna help, it's gonna, or is gonna hurt, it's gonna help. And the main drag, you know, people looking, "Well, what about Fayette Street? What about Harrison? You know, what is the courthouse? What are they gonna do?" Listen, as a policeman, you go down Grashit to Michigan, Michigan to the courthouse, that's the safest place to go. It isn't wise to go through these residential areas, anyway. So I don't see any complications to closing. In fact, everyone that looked at this has agreed that it is there for it, and the fire department said it's a wise thing to do. Thank you.
I'm amazed.[986.43][986.43](APPLAUSE).
Mayor, our next speaker is Everett Dubey. Next will be Demetrius Braddock. Okay, let's go with Debbie Melkonian. She's here.
Good evening, everyone. Debbie Melkonian, 2116 Adams Boulevard. Tonight, I am going to speak about the tax cap. Saginaw is the last city in the country with a tax cap that handcuffs us. This was stated at a meeting held on November 3rd, hosted by the Ezekiel Project. It has been 34-plus years the tax cap was implemented. In 1979, the city established two tax caps. One imposes a millage rate of 7.5 mils for Saginaw's general operating fund. The other limits the total tax the city can collect through that millage to about 3.8 million. At this point, I have mixed up my pages. Voters have, in seven elections over the last three decades, been asked to raise or eliminate the city's tax cap, and seven times it was defeated. The Ezekiel, the Ezekiel Project has been highly involved over the years to make this happen. I, along with other residents, offer help in launching a campaign to lift the cap. I personally am putting a committee together to ask City Council to consider putting this to a vote again in the very near future. We need to put a major campaign together, similar to the one we used to get the public safety millage passed. We need to solicit volunteers to get this done, need to work with churches, unions, and a variety of organizations throughout the city, as well as to work with our council. Need to educate the public on the benefits of removing the cap. Their simple facts and the language as well, when out-presenting this, must be simple. We need to answer the basic question, which everyone will ask, "How much will this cost Need to work with the Saginaw Landlord Association, with all the neighborhood associations, and all individuals throughout the city. How removing the tax cap will benefit if supported and passed. If anyone would like to become part of this campaign to help start putting together a proposal to get this on the ballot, please contact me. I strongly urge the council to consider reopening the idea of putting the tax cap back on the ballot. Thank you.
Mayor, next on our agenda is remarks of council.
And council members, a reminder, you have a five-minute limit. And tonight, we begin with Councilman John Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank everyone who attended for the reading of the two resolutions honoring our very fine citizens who passed away. It shows how much they were loved and noticed by their fellow citizens. Activities in the past week, I wanted to mention and thank everyone who worked with Arson Watch. We had another fantastic, two nights of arson watch, and zero arsons during those two evenings. And considering some of our recent history, that means they did very well with their patrolling. I've been to a couple of neighborhood meetings, and people mentioned how they saw the little yellow flashing lights around the city both those nights, so, very visible. I wanted to just make a short remark, because I don't want us to focus on it except for trying to solve the problem. We've had a small recent spate of violence, some shootings, one, unfortunately, a homicide. And I just wanted to ask everyone to look at this as an opportunity to break the chain, because in speaking with our police chief and our other city law enforcement personnel, these things are often connected. Someone is mad at someone, is mad at someone from something that happened years ago. And only by trying to break that chain is some of this gonna stop. So anyone who is, is close to people involved in this, try and convince them that it's time to break the chain. I want to thank Ms. Melkonian for bringing up the tax cap. I think the remarks she made are directly to the point that if this is gonna be approached and a change is gonna happen, it's gonna have to come from the citizens putting together their voice and bringing to us the proposal, because if it's driven from our side of the podium, that's not gonna work. It hasn't worked in the past. But I hope that over the past few years, since the last time this was attempted, the citizens have found their city council and their city management as a group to be trusted with a change in their tax policy. So please continue to bring this up. I know it's been mentioned at a number of civic meetings lately, and I think the people are looking to work on this issue. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I don't think that we, as citizens of Saginaw, or even citizens of the state of the world, could find two finer role models that we could emulate and follow in Dr. Rufus Bradley and in Tom Webb, Doc Webb. Certainly, they led by example, and we, as a community, have greatly benefited, and for that, we are grateful. Second, the tax cap issue, appreciate your words. It is something that has been discussed individually, and maybe in groups of two or three among council members, that something needs to be done. When we're constantly asked, "Why isn't the city doing this?", or "Why isn't the city doing that?", or "Why isn't the city taking care of this other thing?", so often the response is the same old refrain, "We don't have the money." I believe that council is interested in, and hopefully will be able to work with the city manager and administration, and try and address the whole issue more comprehensively, that it's not just lifting the tax cap. That's a small piece of the puzzle. A city is constantly trying to do more with less, and each time we turn around, we end up with another unfunded mandate or responsibility to pick up and pay for something that in the past wasn't our job. So my, my belief is that we, as council, are aware of this, and hopefully we'll have an opportunity to talk about it as a group, and see if there isn't something that can't be done from a more comprehensive standpoint than just lifting a tax cap. Moving on, I don't mean to steal any of the thunder from my distinguished council member to my right, but I was very annoyed with our media coverage of lead in Saginaw's water. And I have had people talk to me about it and express some of their concerns about it. And to me, it was one of the biggest non-stories that got more coverage than it needed to. Saginaw's Water Department has routinely and regularly received awards and recognition for the quality of water that it provides. And to say that, "Oh, my goodness, Saginaw has more lead parts per billion than the city of Flint," is not a story. Of course, the city of Flint, who's being monitored and regulated and checked ad nauseam, is going to have a level at this point, at its current level. Saginaw's level is not at an actionable point. It is measured every three years at 30 sites where lead has been identified as a risk and an issue for those 30 homes, because they had lead pipes. It's not a story, folks. We have outstanding water. I think Kimberly Mason does an excellent job as the Director of our Water and Wastewater Services Department, and I think the people over in the water treatment plant do an outstanding job. So I commend them. I publicly repudiate any kind of claim that we have a lead in our water issue. It's just not true. And I would ask any and all to share that same reasoning line of thought, that true news. And then to our friends at Old Town, we'll give it very, very serious consideration. You know that I know the work that you do down there, and what a remarkable job it is that you do to go past there on any given weekend morning and see the people lined up with their carts and their little four-wheel wagons because of the food that you do give away. I commend you for all of that work, and I thank you for the services that you provide. With that, I think I've said enough.[1642.41][1642.41](LAUGHTER).
(INAUDIBLE) situation here. You have the same problems, you have the same person who was dressed, but you, Councilmember Michael Ball, seems to be coming in from the back of the room.
He's coming in hot.
Today.
(LAUGHTER).
I love it. We got a lot of comrades, too.
Welcome, Councilman Michael Ball. I knew that you were, we certainly knew that you were running late, and we're glad you're here. Good timing. You're upcoming.
Right. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to start my council comments by acknowledging two people that were very special to me, and that was Tom Webb and Dr. Rufus Bradley. I had first met Mr. Bradley when he came before the Human Planning Commission. It was right after I lost election for City Council, and I was still really involved, and I was attending these Human Planning Commission meetings, and I was just gobsmacked by his presentation, and how much data he could put into that presentation, and how he really forecasted that vision. And since that time, he was a good friend and advisor to me. And working with Saginaw Neighborhoods, Tom Webb was a very good friend. And both of them have a lasting legacy in this community, and we can drive by many of the things that they've done. So, but I just wanted to acknowledge that. Also, I wanted to say thanks to everyone who came out for Arson Watch. Me and Councilwoman Moore had a very good time together, patrolling the city. Brenda thought she was a junior police officer.[1751.33][1751.33](LAUGHTER). But it was really a great time. I think we had almost a record number of folks in attendance, so it was a good night. As Councilman Millen said, zero, zero fires in the city of Saginaw, so that's great. Also, I just want to thank my colleagues who were able to attend and who donated for the United Way with Saginaw's Most Stylish. Some of you guys have seen on social media, I was dressed up as a lumberjack, as a nod to Saginaw's history. But it was all in good fun, and that event itself raised over $45,000 for literacy programs right here in the city of Saginaw, so that was awesome. And kudos to the staff at United Way. Also, wanted to acknowledge Romero Gonzalez and also Harold Evans and their family. They both were passed away but were inducted. I was able- I was able to attend also with Mayor Protem Klock because those two individuals from our community were inducted into the Saginaw Hall of Fame. And they were too, I was fortunate enough to know Romero Gonzalez and also very fortunate to know my neighbor, Harold Evans, as he was inducted. So, that was a great, great evening. Also, I would just like to remind everybody that Veterans Day is coming up this weekend, and Saginaw County Veterans Memorial Plaza will be hosting a ceremony at 11:00 a.m. And next weekend, for Holidays in the Heart of the City, our mayor will be the grand marshal. So, we hope to see everyone there, and it ought to be a great time as we gear up for the Holidays in the City. Thanks.
Good evening. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. You know, I get excited when I walk in council chamber in this standing room only. I wish we could do this all the time because it lets us know that at least we doing our This week has been a quiet couple or two weeks, which was good. I did attend United Way's affair and watched all of the different people who raised money. And there was one gentleman there, and he started off the show, and it was like, it was just phenomenal to sit there and watch grown men and women just come out of character. When you used to see them straight-laced, and then all of a sudden, they heavy metal, they got beards, and I'm like, okay. So, that was really fun this week. I also had the opportunity on Friday to be with MML, and I know I talk about MML a lot. MML stands for municipal league, and it is an organization where I happen to be on the trustee board, which is an honor for the city of Saginaw because we haven't had a person on that board for a long time. And what we have been discussing is, we've been discussing how we can make everybody's city better, not just Saginaw. And when I sit there, they wait at the edge of their seat to hear what I say about Saginaw. And these are people from all over the state of Michigan. And so, this week, we're looking, and they've asked me on several occasions, can we come to Saginaw to have our annual conference? And I just believe that one day, we're going to be able to bring them to Saginaw, and you can see all of the work that they do. It's not just a Saginaw thing, it's just a statewide thing where they actually help you raise money. If I want to know about politics, I have lobbyists who go in and out of the state capital on a daily basis that tells me everything is getting ready to change, what's getting ready here. I immediately call people and say, "Okay, we need to call our representatives." And so, I'm encouraging, again, at our meeting, we've got a scholarship out where you can actually go to the conference in March, and if your name is pulled, you'll get there free. I don't have a choice. I'm going to be there. For my colleagues, we are asking again that you take part. I can't do it all by myself, and I need some help. I truly do, I need some help. I also went to do arson watch. Now, Councilman Brian is right. I had a yellow light on my car, so I thought that gave me permission to run the lights. No, Chief Ruth, I didn't run the lights. I went there all kinds of neighborhoods where people did probably didn't want to see me. The yellow light deterred a whole lot of stuff now, you know? But it was just a fun, fun night, and the food was fabulous. For the neighborhood association, I just want y'all to know, I went home full that night. My stomach was so tight, I went to the, I went over to the, what is it, FOP? See if I can see anybody? I went over to the FOP hall, and there was a gentleman there, and he made a cake. And that cake was good, even though I wasn't supposed to eat that sugar. That cake was good, and he made it from scratch. It was, what, did he have a dollar bill? He did an arson watch cake, and, I mean, it was from scratch he made it. And the cake was fabulous, the food I ate, then I went to Houghton Jones. I was just a pig that night. I went there, and so, if you've never been involved, please come out. And on the 17th of November, I'm sure the mayor's going to talk about it, come out to light up the city because we're going to be out there. I hope that my colleagues will be out there. We're going to be out there greeting the citizens and also greeting people who come into our city, thanking them, and wishing you all a happy holidays. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. First, regrettably, I have plans for the week of the 15th. So, I won't be available, unfortunately, for some of the activities. However, I do want to, rather than repeat and therefore belabor these points, I don't want to repeat my council, fellow councilperson's comments, so I'll just adopt them as my own because they were well-stated. So, I'll leave it at that. I also do have some comments on one of the agenda items later. I'll refer that to that time. And then finally, there has been an inquiry regarding our report, the sister city, Tokushima delegation report to the council. It is a work in progress. We are trying to corral information and photographs from 16 people, so it won't happen right away. But we are working on it, and we will, when we are ready, we will notify the manager and ask for that presentation to be put on the agenda. So, with that, I will pass.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to thank the city for recognizing Pastor Rufus Bradley and Tom Webb. Those two individuals met a lot to me. You know, those who know me know that I didn't have a relationship with my biological dad, and I was pretty much raised by my grandparents. And Dr. Rufus Bradley pretty much set an example for me. My grandfather did raise me, and he was for an intensive purpose my dad. But Rufus Bradley, just how he carried himself spiritually and how he operated his church and how he gave to the city was just a great example for me, and I appreciate him for that. And the fact that I saw him on the golf course two or three times off the week just really confirmed that for me as well. He was an avid golfer, and he was just a good person. The city will miss him, I will miss him. And as well as Mr. Webb, you know, you could tell that he was a teacher. As I said, I was raised by my grandparents, and my grandmother was a teacher, and they always had a way of leading you to the answer without telling you the answer. And talking to Mr. Webb, he always did that with me. And his passion for the city and his grassroots effort as far as with the neighborhood associations was by far a great example for me and for our residents. Neighborhood associations are the backbone of the city as far as being the eyes and ears. And the fact that he was passionate about the Saginaw High Neighborhood Association as far as operating those meetings and eventually converging it with the state fairgrounds or turning into the state fairgrounds neighborhood association was remarkable, and I appreciate Mr. Webb, what he's done for me and for the city. Just one other thing I wanted to add was I'd like to thank the city for including me in the discussion about the local store ordinance. I think it will go a long way in making our city safer. And as our mayor would say, to make the city a place to, what do you say, eat, sleep, and work, or party and work. I think that ordinance will do a long way for that. You know, just as a resident, and I'll just make a suggestion, I believe I saw Ms. Malconian came here a few times and discussed about the window coverage in some of these stores. I think if the ordinance would address that, even though I believe there's a current ordinance that addressed it, but maybe we can make it a little more clear or make it a little more stringent. I would also like to see the ordinance include something about removing litter daily from the resident, or from these properties, as well as create a separate area for some of the adult material that these stores sell, video, drug paraphernalia likewise, because many of our young adults and kids go to these stores daily, and it's unfortunate that they have to be susceptible to these things at such an, such an early age. Also, I believe, I don't know if the Ezekiel Project discussed this or came, discussed this, but I know some of the members, I believe Ms. Seale, she came and talked about maybe adopting a regulation of distance between some of these stores similar to Kalamazoo. So, maybe the city could think about adding that to the ordinance as well. But I really enjoyed the meeting, and I thought it was very productive, and I think it's a good step forward, and I look forward to when we can review it and possibly vote on it. And that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
And unlike Councilwoman Brenda Moore, I get a little nervous when it's standing room only, and the halls are filled because, but it's certainly a wonderful occasion. Two wonderful men who have served our community and served it well, but not alone. They were both very successful because they surrounded themselves with beautiful people who also had that same passion and did so well. So, my condolences to the families, and we'll greatly miss them. And we will look forward for the next generation coming forward, the new leaders coming forward and following that same kind of passion. Thank you to all our speakers tonight. Special thanks to my former sergeant and now Pastor Don Deninger. I know how difficult it is for you to stand up there and only be given three minutes. So, you did very well. And I have to comment because, you know, we talked about for so many years, people would approach us and say, "Bring back the old Saginaw we used to have. Bring back the old Saginaw we used to have." Well, that's not going to happen, and to be quite frankly, I told my, I've told this story many times, you know? After about three years on the police department with 92,000 to 96,000 people in the city of Saginaw, I said, "When I'm retired, I want to move to a smaller community." I haven't moved, but I am in a beautiful, a beautiful community of 50,000 people, and I'm okay with that. So, instead of bringing back the old Saginaw, we're reinventing the new Saginaw, and there's so many of you here are a part of that, whether it's a business or living here or shopping here, enjoying the amenities that go on in our community, our arts and festivals and so much. So, it's really a very, very, very unique community that we have here. Arson Watch, I went out very sad this year. Last several years, I've had a very wonderful cousin of mine that he loved riding with me for the arson watch. And Brian, unfortunately, a couple days before that, went through a very serious heart surgery, and he's down at the Ford Hospital. So, I did drive around myself for a little while. I did stop at Houghton Jones, the FOP Lodge, and also over at Zion Lutheran where they had, all three of those, by the way, had donuts. And so, you can see why I probably stopped there because, you know, you just, I could just, they were calling me. And so, but I loved it. And I spent more time in those places than I did on the road simply because people had questions. People were curious about stuff, and it gave me a chance to talk to them and to just share some of our thoughts and share some of their stories of living in Saginaw. So, it's a wonderful, wonderful place. We do have some exciting things coming up. Boy, our Holidays in the City on Friday is a great time. Please try to find someone who's never been here before and bring them with you. Bring them over there. I mean, it's absolutely free. I mean, and there's not too many places you're going to go, absolutely free. There's hot chocolate all over the place, there's cookies, and just the Japanese tea house from there over to the children's zoo, the free horse rides, I mean, the carolers that'll be out. It's just, it's a very, very fun time. And then, of course, it's capped off by the fireworks at 8:30 that will be shot off the back of Jibway Island again. So, anywhere in that area there, enjoy those fireworks. It's a Friday night, it's not on a school night. So, bundle the kids up, bring them out, and let them get a chance to see this wonderful time. And of course, as a council member had mentioned, I'm very honored to have been selected as this year's grand marshal and look forward to the parade as I always do, but a little different meeting. So, I'm very humbled for that opportunity. So, with that... Madam Clerk.
Business is the reports for manager.
Thank you. We have just a few items. So, I would congratulate the fire department and everyone involved in arson watch as well for zero fires on the day, night before Halloween and Halloween night, or zero arson fires. And I think that's three consecutive years of that. So, they've all been doing a great job. And also, I'd like to congratulate, we have co-police officers of the month this month, Officer Byerline and Officer Lautner were the two officers who responded to the active shooter at Covenant Cooper. And they did a great job, and I'm sure, I'm sure you'll get more detail when the police awards are next handed out. So, they did a great job, and they're our two officers of the month this year. Councilman Tibbs mentioned our, and I think we've expanded it a bit, we met for the, originally calling it a convenience store ordinance that Councilman Tibbs had asked about at council meetings. Mayor Protem Klock, Councilwoman Moore, and Councilman Tibbs and I, as well as the city attorney and police chief, met about that, and I think we even expanded it somewhat to include a lot of other businesses. So, we do have a draft of that. The city attorney will be sending that out to those three council members, and then I assume one of them would probably sponsor it to come back to council at an upcoming meeting. I think they did good work with that. The mission, vision statement, and core values are now live on the city website. They're on the front page, so if you haven't had an opportunity to look at those, you can get, check those out. And thanks for getting them on there so quickly to Vicky Davis in city manager's office and technical services for doing the layout and getting them posted. We'll also, you do have the calendar for the upcoming council meetings in the next year, which again, has our January strategic planning session on that. So, I'd ask you to start thinking about that. I've had comments from some council members already, so I think we have a couple of good topics already. One suggested by Councilman Humphries, tax 101-type informational session, and I think that's a good topic for the strategic planning session. We've also done a lot more work on the redevelopment-ready community requirements. Elana Jones has been working on that with some other staff members as well as the state of Michigan. City council did vote to become a redevelopment-ready community, and since that time, it's been switched to a requirement for cities to become compliant with that. So, we'd like to give an update for that, possibly get a representative from the state to talk about the program and how far along we are on it. And finally, the DDA through the contracted director, Saginaw Futures, doing a market study for the DDA district. I think that would be something that council would be interested in seeing. That's one of the projects that they're doing with the DDA two-mil levy that DDA approved and council approved later. So, those are some topics that we're thinking about working into that, and if you have any questions about those or any comments, please just send them directly to me. And finally, I also wanted to thank Major Courts for Minors, John Vowle and Katrina Vowle invited me to come and see their program that they have there on Thursday night, I think is their busiest, busiest night, so I went over there with Councilwoman Bench, and very impressed by what they have working there. So, I'm glad that we can support them with the, with our grant from the HUD money. So, I think they're open to anybody visiting them, so if you all are interested in that, I'm sure, if you haven't been there and you're interested, Councilwoman Bench has been pretty active, and I think both of her children are involved in the program. in the program. So we can easily set something up for you to go over to see that. And I thank Councilman Humphries for mentioning those stories that I think are quite sensationalized and also don't mention that we are well under the EPA requirements for lead and have been for years. And Councilman correctly stated it that it is, we only test high risk homes with lead service lines. So those are the highest readings that we have. So thank you. And I see that you read the memo that Ms. Mason had put together to send the council. So if you ever had a chance to look that over, there's a lot of information in there with some points that if people have questions about that, that you can easily relay them to. And if you have any more questions, feel free to contact us. And even if you want to sit down with folks from the water plant, they're always eager to update you on what they're doing over there. And with that concludes the management update.
What's the location for Major Courts for Minors?
First Congregational Church now. They moved over there a while ago. So they're right, right downtown pretty much. And they take up most of second floor, I think, where they had the Sunday school. So it's a great location for them. And the way they have it set up, it, I think it's, it's laid out perfectly for what they're doing there. Pretty impressive with the number of kids. They're, they're serving, I think, in the neighborhood of 220 kids. And I think they have about 300 on the waitlist. So a lot of people involved. It's much larger than, than I remember from when we first founded them, but Saginaw Valley State University choir professors involved in teaching. And they also have a painting program for young kids over there now. It's pretty impressive.
Something on my heart, and I wanted to mention it, you know, Pastor Bradley and, and Dr. Webb, I knew those guys personally. And I know what they did in the community. And they saved a lot of lives. And they're going to need somebody to take in their footsteps to help these young children out in their communities. And on that point, I was thinking about the killings that we had recently in the city of Saginaw. And it really, it really touches my heart to know that we still got kids out here that are doing things like that. And I know for a fact, I know the solution for that situation where we can help out. I've been a mentor in the Big Brothers and Sisters program for 30 years now. I have six little brothers. I just recently got my seventh 10-year-old. And none of these guys have been in any major trouble since I've been with them. The statistics says that two out of three young black males living in the city, they end up getting in trouble. And I had six so far and neither one of them has been in any major trouble. So if anybody want to help out this situation, please get involved in the Big Brothers and Sisters program or get with a kid in your neighborhood and help mentor him. I'm 60 years young and helped raise two sons and a bunch of grandkids. And now I've got three or four great-grandkids. But none of these kids have been in any trouble because I didn't spend time with them. It don't, it ain't nothing about taking them any special places. Just bring them to your house, show them how to cut the grass, fix the lawnmower, watch maybe you and your wife get into a small debate and there's no knock down, drag out after the fact, you know, so they can see there are some solutions to these issues sometime. And so I just support our community to please get involved in somebody's life if you don't want these killers to keep going on in our community. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The agenda's been available at City Hall and then on the city's website and on SGTV Channel 191. They need a motion to approve the consent agenda items, leaving room for exceptions. It's been moved and supported. Are there any exceptions? Are there any exceptions? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next item is reports from boards, commissions and committees and appointment of board and commission members.
First, council members, is there any board or commission that you're on that you would like to do a verbal report? Being none. We have approval of a city council appointment of Nathan Crawford to the Human Planning Commission with a term to expire December 31st, 2018. Need a motion? Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Next is our introduction of ordinances. We do have one this evening. It's an ordinance to amend Chapter 152 of Title 15 Land Usage by amending Section 152.51 titled Naming or Renaming Streets, Parks, Buildings and Other Property.
Been moved in support to introduce. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries and the ordinance will be laid over under the charter provision.
Our next order of business is consideration and passing of ordinances. Our first one is an ordinance to amend the official city map to vacate Baum Street between blocks 44 and 59 and extended north to the north right-of-way line of Tuscola Street.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next ordinance is to amend the official city map to vacate the 500 block of South Fayette, lying between blocks 17 and 18 in the city of Saginaw, south of Cass Street.
Need a motion to adopt? Been moved in support. Is there any further discussion? Council, our Mayor Pro Tem Floyd Clark.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, the Old Town Christian Outreach Center is an important asset to the city of Saginaw. And our speakers, Mr. Burns, Mr. Bond, and particularly Pastor Deninger, all expressed important considerations in this regard to this ordinance and the vacation of this section of the street. So with that, and in spite, in spite of that, but also because of that, this is difficult for me to say, but I have to oppose it, at least at this time. So Pastor Deninger, I understand, and I know Pastor Deninger personally, but there's three reasons that I am not prepared to vote for this. The first has to do with the fact that I, as an attorney working in the city or in the courthouse, I'm well aware that while the count of vehicles using that street is not particularly high, it is a route used quite a bit by the police and deputies who you, who come from that portion south of the courthouse to access the courthouse and the jail for purposes of delivery and transport of prisoners. Secondly, I'm concerned that this may not be good public policy at this time anyway, in part because, and I realize the considerations that are being requested of us to look at this, is more than just that this is to be for parking. But I do know that part of what the proposal was, was to use this as parking. And I really can't see that as a good use of an important public asset. Streets are public assets. And we as a city council are responsible to the public for the use of these assets. The reason in part that I say I'm not sure it's a good public policy at this time to use it in this way is we have been approached by the sheriff with the possible use of a portion of Fayette Street for a new jail. Whether or not that happens plays directly on this particular petition because it's approximately two blocks further north. If we're going to consider a potential, and it hasn't happened yet, that's an important consideration. We have not been asked to vacate that portion of Fayette Street yet where they are considering putting a jail. If that were to happen, then it seems to me that this request should be held in abeyance until we have that request to determine if it's appropriate to close that whole section of street down, not just one block. Until that happens, and to me, that's an overarching issue. Until that happens, or if it is going to happen, I am not prepared to vacate one block, in part because that may or may not affect the sheriff's decision. And it may or may not affect the sheriff's decision whether to ask us to vacate more and to affect where that jail will go. I would rather have that decision made first and then let us look at this issue. And that's being said with all respect for everything the outreach, the Old Town Christian Outreach Center does. And it's a lot, and I recognize that. And I commented earlier that I was holding my comments on this in reserve for the particular agenda item. And that's what we're at now. I am concerned about these other considerations. And until those can be answered, I am not prepared to vote for this. So I will be voting no at this time. I don't know what our other council members will do, but I think that that overarching concern should be addressed before we vote on this. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I-
The town, if they're requesting Fayette, they're requesting a portion of Harrison, South Harrison.
That may also affect this one though, in some respect, because that will close off that access potentially and allowing, and this now will be closed off as well. So I, I am concerned about that.
You are correct. A portion of Harrison Street is under review by Public Services. So that, that would probably come to council and we're thinking January.
Because we're now, depending on what we block off, we may be blocking off different blocks, sections of different blocks. And I am, I remain very concerned about that potential unless it is looked at as an overall package to determine what's in the best interest of the public.
Councilman Quinn Bryant.
I just wanted to make it very clear that the meeting that we had, several meetings for the last few months, because I am the council representative for the planning commission, those are all on YouTube. And we did have some of that discussion on there, but we have been working the last several months about solutions. We also had Tom Miller, senior in here as well from the land bank to talk about that and a few other issues. So there was a public hearing that was held. We heard very limited against, but it did pass. The planning commission was referred to city council by unanimous margin. That's all.
Sitting here thinking about it since hearing from the speakers, the fact that it did go before the planning commission, it has been studied probably ad nauseam by the city engineer's office. I believe administration supports it. I want to tread very lightly on second guessing those committees, those, those commissions, those groups that we empower to do the work. If, if it is a good idea and it has been duly vetted, it makes sense to follow the recommendation. And I support it.
I guess that was what partially what was my initial concern. If there was a concern was the, I guess the, what's the word I'm looking for? The ability for those who might be impacted had a voice into how this would affect them specifically. There's several businesses, I believe, in Gratiety could possibly impact. And you said there were public hearings.
There was a public hearing and also there was an engineering study that the city of Saginaw did. And those mailings went out directly to the businesses and those city residents who lived in that area. And there was very limited concern.
When you said limited, I mean, but there were some-
Very, very limited. I think there was somebody from Frankenmuth who owned property in there, maybe two other ones of the 63 affected in there. I can share that study with you. But we did thoroughly vet this for the last few months in the planning commission.
All right. Thank you, Council.
I just wanted to support Mayor Pro Tem Clark in some of his concerns. And I did present those to the city planning commission during this public hearing. And so I have to feel they've, they've taken in the judgment of the various city departments and decided it could go forward. But it would have been, I think, better if we had been able to do it in a more comprehensive manner, looking at what happens on Harrison Street and the Fayette Street at the same time.
Addressed to the city manager. I'm hearing that they've asked for a street, but it's a different street to be blocked off for the jail. And it will come before us in January. We've had a committee that's done an extensive study. And I'm almost like Mr. Humphrey, Councilman Humphrey. We can't second guess the people that we put in there. Because if they're saying it's okay, then why are we, I mean, we going, we getting ready to have a debate. I know we are. So can we, are we, are we ready to vote on this?
Councilman Clark, because you did mention some-
Yeah, I just briefly want to ask, if I may, if the sheriff's department or any of the police agencies that use that street were asked for input.
We did. Sheriff Fetterfield, Sheriff Fetterfield did come to the public hearing and he did have comments to make. I can't directly tell, tell you exactly what he said at that meeting, but I can send that YouTube link to you.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Greatly because of the use by the police and the sheriff. And I, my concern remains about the overarching use of these streets in a neighborhood that's fairly compact. And if we cut off two different areas potentially, I think that's a, especially since the planning commission has not even looked at the next issue of Harrison Street. To me, that should all be done at the same time. That's all I have to say.
Any other comments? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Bryant.
Aye.
Councilman Vowell.
Aye.
Councilman Humphries.
Aye.
Councilwoman Milne.
Aye.
Councilman Tibbs.
Aye.
Councilwoman Bench is absent. Mayor Pro Tem Clark.
Nay.
Councilperson Moore.
Aye.
Mayor Browning.
Aye.
We have eight yes votes and one no. I'm sorry, we have seven yes votes and one no. Our next order of business is resolutions.
We're almost done. And, and for you to get up now would be, if you would just hold off for just a minute, please.
Our first resolution is supporting the Voting Systems Grant Agreement application.
Need a motion to adopt?
Support.
All in favor? Those opposed, motion carries.
Our next resolution is to transfer an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate for property at 100 North Washington Avenue from Bancroft Project Saginaw LLC to Rocco Bancroft LLC.
Been moved in support. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
The last resolution this evening is to transfer an obsolete property rehabilitation certificate for property at 414 Court Street from Three Brick Blocks LLC to 106 North Michigan Avenue LLC.
Been moved in support. Any further discussion on the motion? Being none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Mayor, we are now at motions and miscellaneous business. We do have a couple of items. Our first one is to receive and file recommendation report from the local officers compensation commission.
Need a motion to receive and file?
On inquiry I made, if we go ahead and, and receive and file this, then we are accepting the results to be effective November 20th. And before I would support this, I think we should discuss whether or not we want to go along with it. And so it's a point of order.
It's been moved and seconded. Before we go into discussion- Before we go into discussion, council members, I'd like to ask those that would like to leave, now would be a good time because this could take a while. Very quietly, please. Thank you. And file. That's right. That's right. So as you move out the hallway, please don't talk until you get maybe down the steps. Thank you. You've been a great audience. Thank you very much. We do have some seating up front for those that would like to come up front. Pastor Deninger, would you lead them in prayer right away? Because that'll be real quiet, and so I appreciate that.
You feel good, John.
Okay, hold on. Hold on. We gotta do this, we gotta do this as a group, so. Please shut, Chief, I'll shut the door. Chief, you want to, oh, okay, the other chief. Madam Clerk, what is the proper procedure for this particular item?
Other than the report, you're receiving it and filing it.
Any action than-
Other than receiving it and filing it. That's your motion. Good. Correct.
Issue, because by just receiving and filing, we accept the report from the local compensation committee as they present it.
You're accepting it for the clerk to file, but that doesn't mean you're approving of it. I think if you wanted to do another action, then that's a separate resolution that you would do.
Do we have to approve it?
No, you don't approve this. You're just filing it with the clerk, acknowledging that you, or in receipt of it.
For purposes, go ahead, discussion.
Received and filed and no other action, it takes effect. The report's recommendation will take effect. Our other course of action would be defeat the motion to receive and file and then act against it to reject it.
It really doesn't matter what the outcome is on the motion to receive and file, but if you wanted to defeat it, you would need to take some other action separate from that, a separate motion and resolution contrary to what the report says.
It's a different way of saying what I said. I don't think there's any reason to not receive and file it.
Actually, if I may, Mr. Mayor, you may ask the city attorney a question.
I believe that we have to receive it to file.
We wish to take any action against it. Otherwise, it is not of record with the city. So it needs to be filed. Well, but it's-
With the clerk's office as stated in the ordinance. So yes, it is a record of the city.
And if no action is taken, it becomes effective.
Our role is to either accept it for filing or not. You're saying that it's already filed, so what's the point of us accepting it for filing? Well, that's my point. It has to come before us on an agenda before we can address it, if we wish to do any action on it, I believe. Would that not be correct?
It isn't before us, otherwise.
It doesn't have to go before you.
I understand. If we wish to take action against it.
It has to be before us, be before us. Correct?
I believe the discussion was at the time that the report came about was to treat it in this manner, even though it was not necessary, so that the council could have the discussion on the report itself, to alert all of the council members to the contents of the report.
My question then would be, if someone wished to make a motion, if they voted this down today and it wasn't received or filed, could a council member make a motion to reject the recommendation?
By resolution. It would need to be proposed in resolution language, but yes.
So someone could, even though we voted down today, is what you're saying?
So we have a motion to receive and file the recommendation report from the Local Officers Compensation Commission. Is there any further discussion on the motion to receive and file it?
As I understand the report and recommendation, it is to eliminate the mileage allowance for council members and raise our per-meeting stipend from $45 to $65. And it also, I think, increases the stipend for the mayor. No. Okay, then I don't know where I got that. And I wasn't party to and don't understand, don't know, any of the conversations that have taken place about this, and so I'm truly coming at this from the outside. I have two, I have one observation and one opinion. My observation is that the way this is done is not in the least bit transparent. Here we are, we sit now in this chamber, in essence, by receiving and filing a report, giving ourselves a raise. It smacks of what Congress does when a pay raise comes before them, and their failing to act means they automatically get it. It happens while they're off and away on Christmas break, and everybody in the country, well, a lot of people get up in arms over it. I think we're doing a similar thing here. It's a pay raise by inaction, and I just don't think that's a reasonable thing to do. I imagine there's a real history to it, and I don't know that history. As far as an opinion is concerned, I didn't apply for the seat vacated by our dearly departed Larry Koloris.
Is this appropriate, then? I just want to make sure I discuss it still appropriate.
On this, or is it to receive and file?
For the transparency purposes, that council is aware of it, that the report is there, you've seen it, and you're receiving and filing it.
Agenda then, it goes into effect.
Do nothing more than after the next meeting, we will receive a $65 check, well, less deductions.
You can receive and file it and then make a motion to not accept it. One is separate from the other, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Receiving and filing it, you're not approving it, you don't have to approve it. That's the way it's set up. You only have to take action to reject it.
Process. We receive it.
Do you want a two-step yet?
And that's what it sounds like, you want a two-step.
Because of the transparency issue.
I guess I'm just confused because less than 10 minutes ago, we were talking about how we create these commissions and committees to do the work and bring-
Do their work.
And so now we're-
Done it.
Okay, I was just a little confused.
Councilman Ball, it's just on the receiving and filing.
Like what Mr. Tibbs said.
So, motion to receive and file. I think we'll call that question, and then whatever action takes place afterwards, so be it. Okay? Motion to receive and file, all in favor signify by aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Does this go under miscellaneous business, then?
Yes.
So what is next on the agenda before we get to miscellaneous business?
We have-
Oh, I'm sorry, we're there now.
Because we have another one coming up after this. We can take this one right now. Let's do this, let's continue on with the same, Councilman?
Approve the recommendation of the Local Officers Compensation Commission.
Is there a second? There a second? There is no second. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Our next order of business is consideration of FOIA appeal submitted by Marlow Build and Remodel.
I'm supposed to announce that the information regarding the FOIA appeal has been submitted to council for review. The city attorney's recommendation is to issue a written notice upholding the partial disclosure denial. I need a motion? To take the city attorney's recommendation. Been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
Is there any other business?
Is there any other business? I don't know of any, any council members, any other business? Motion to adjourn. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all in favor signify by aye. Those opposed? We're adjourned.